All right, it is October 21st, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And this is the City of Iowa City formal meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Saleh.
Kia.
Teague.
Here.
Y-line.
Here.
All right, I want to welcome everyone to your city hall that is here present and to those that are joining us virtual, welcome as well. We're going to get started with item number two, which is proclamations. The first one is to a community planning month, and this will be read by Councilor Burgess.
Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, counties, and places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people live and work. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in planning for the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month, which is endorsed by the American Planning Association and is an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to addressing ongoing community needs and how planners can lead communities to stronger futures. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions who have contributed their time to this field. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional urban planners of the City of Iowa City, Iowa, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. And whereas this commitment is exemplified by the city's current update to its comprehensive plan and parking study and associated revisions to the zoning code parking standards, all of which are funded by the city's $3.75 million pro housing award through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Now therefore, I on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Community Planning Month in Iowa City, Iowa, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. And here to accept this proclamation is our Development Services Coordinator Danielle Sitzman.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. On behalf of Neighborhood and Development Services, we really appreciate this proclamation for Community Planning Month, which full disclosure, we may have helped draft. And it is all about shaping the kind of city we want to live in, connected, welcoming, and ready for the future. Our staff do a ton of work behind the scenes to help guide growth, support housing, and make Iowa City a great place to live. The comprehensive plan update and the parking study just mentioned in this proclamation are perfect examples of that. They take a lot of collaboration, problem solving, and heart from our team, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission members and our community members who keep showing up and helping us plan a stronger Iowa City together. So, thank you for taking a moment to recognize that. It really does mean a lot. We love this community, even on the days when the Iowa City subreddit comments make us question our life choices. Proud to be part of planning Iowa City's future.
All right, we are at 2B Gamma Phi Beta Row Chapter 110th Anniversary Homecoming. And this proclamation states, whereas Gamma Phi Beta's Row Chapter was founded at the University of Iowa on June 15th, 1915, and has for 110 years continued years enriched Iowa City with leadership, service, and sisterhood in furtherance of fostering strong women of character, intelligence, and community spirit. And whereas throughout its history, the Row Chapter has contributed significantly to charitable and philanthropic causes, dedicating countless hours to local service, fundraising, and mentorship. Gamma Phi Beta's philanthropy focuses on building strong girls, providing resources and experiences to foster spiritual, mental, and social resiliency in young girls. Their signature philanthropic partner is Girls on the Run, an organization dedicated to empowering girls to be joyful, healthy, and confident. Gamma Phi Beta members support Girls on the Run through volunteering as coaches and ambassadors, assisting at 5K events and raising money through signature events like Moon Ball. And whereas the chapter's commitment to empowering women and cultivating academic excellence, civic engagement, and lifelong leadership and sisterhood has nurtured generations of women who positively shape our community and beyond. And whereas as Row Chapter celebrates this milestone with a homecoming 110th anniversary reception, October 24th through the 26th, the City of Iowa City formally recognizes this milestone and expresses its appreciation for the Row Chapter's enduring legacy and current contributions, extending a warm welcome home to alums. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim October 21st, 2025 to be Gamma Phi Beta Row Chapter 110th Anniversary Homecoming in Iowa City, Iowa, and extend sincere congratulations and gratitude to the members past and present of the Row Chapter for 110 years of service, leadership, and dedication to developing strong women and strengthening our community. And we have quite a few people accepting this proclamation today, so we'll give them all a big round of applause and have you all stand, and you can come on up and give some remarks.
Hi, I'm Mary Kate Dunklaw. I'm the current chapter president of Gamma Phi Beta. I want to thank all of you guys so much for this opportunity. This is so cool. But I'm super excited to celebrate with all of us. I'm with the rest of our exec team and our alumni chairwoman and our alumni advisor, Lisa, who have helped make this weekend happen. But we're super excited to celebrate the past 110 years at the University of Iowa and how much our chapter has grown and how many opportunities we've given the women in our chapter and to our philanthropy and just to the university. So, thank you.
I knew you weren't going to make them stand, so I did it for you. 2C, United Nations, and this will be read by Mayor Protem Sala.
Whereas October 24th is the 80th anniversary of the United Nations, and whereas the UN has prevented and solved conflict aided the victim of natural and man-made disaster, improved standards of life and global health, advanced human rights, and initiated measures to protect the planet. And whereas the UN has helped make the United States safer, more prosperous, and secure. And whereas the Johnson County chapter of the United Nations Association of the USA has helped to inform the public about the United Nations and advocated for constructive U.S. leadership in the world body. And whereas the Johnson County United Nations Association and the Iowa City Foreign Relations Council are hosting a UN Day event on Wednesday, October 22nd, at noon at the Iowa City Public Library, featuring University of Iowa historian Elizabeth Heinemann is speaking on anti-Semitism. Now therefore, I Ms. Zaher Saleh, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby Brooklyn Man Friday, October 24th, 2025, as United Nation Day in Iowa City. And to accept is my friend, Big Ubal Maliafu.
Sorry, I'm making you guys wait. Thank you so much, City Councils, for recognizing the United Nation Day and reaffirming our shared commitment to peace, human rights, and global cooperation. The UN's work began right here in our community, when we choose inclusion, understanding, and action. Together, we build the bridge that connects people, culture, and nations. As we celebrate UN Day, please remember to contact your Congress, the member of your Congress, and remind them how important it is to keep the United Nations in the U.S. because the U.S. needs the UN. 2025 marked the 28th anniversary of the United Nations Forum at the conclusion of World War II under the leadership of the United States. We commend the United Nations for its record of achievement in promoting human rights, protecting our planet, preventing and resolving conflict, and providing aid to victims of war and natural disaster. We also recognize the UN's large end-meet agenda requiring continued international cooperation. Therefore, we call for a strengthening partnership between the United States and the UN. And also, we invite you to come on Wednesday, please, at the library between 1:30 and noon to celebrate with us UN Day. I also have a QR code if you guys can sign to talk to Congress and let them keep the UN in the U.S. because the UN actually helps everyone worldwide. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda, which is items number three through eight. Could I get a motion, please?
Second. Alter.
Moved by Saleh, seconded by Alter. Anyone from the public like to address a topic that is on our consent agenda? Seeing no one, online or in person. Council discussion.
I just wanted to say I'm excited for the new skate park that we're finally putting this out to bid. I know a lot of people have been asking me, like, they thought that it was going to be this summer, but had to explain to them because of federal dollars being held up. That's why it was delayed. So, I'm really excited. So, I don't know. Thank you.
I just want to note on the item just prior to that, that I'm really pleased that the downtown district is renewing its SMID and indeed extending its boundaries so that more people can be included in this. So, I think, I know it's a lot to get it renewed, but I'm so glad that the will is there and that people see the value.
Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo. Yes. Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number nine is community comment. This is an opportunity for items that are not on our agenda to be spoken on. Is there anyone in the council chambers that would like to speak tonight? All right, I see three individuals that are speaking on items that are not on our agenda. So, I see two individuals. I'm going to invite you up at this time, and there you'll be given three minutes each. Please state your name and city you're from, and there's a sign in there, or if you have a... Yep, just drop it right in there. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, and I also applaud the city planning staff. Yay, they definitely deserve the recognition. I love living in Iowa City because a lot of the planning choices, and that's what I'm here to talk to you about. So, it's very auspicious. So, I'm here to talk about 611 Greenwood Drive, just for, to refresh your memory, that's at the Roosevelt Elementary location. It's between Benton and Greenwood. There is no on-street parking on Benton or Greenwood. They are proposing 315 bedrooms and 160 parking spots. This is a recipe for conflict. But I'm not here to talk to you about that conflict. I'm here to talk to you about a solution to the potential conflict. On 9/16, in the supplemental packet, I sent a letter about a transportation alternative to parking spots. So, transportation in lieu of parking. So, a surface parking spot costs a developer about $4,000 right now to build. If you do it enclosed in a structure, it's more like 12,000 to 15,000. It's not cheap. But an e-bike gives someone freedom, and this is an affordable housing complex. And so, if you're spending $600 to $900 a month, 20% of your income, if you're 60% AMI, owning a vehicle is very expensive. 95% of households in Iowa City have a car, so we know there's going to be conflict when they have got 315 bedrooms with 160 spots. But what if you gave people a different kind of freedom? What if you gave them secure bike parking with charging, and you leased or offered a purchase voucher to those tenants? Not only would you have more financial security as a landlord, the tenant would also have more financial security, because then maybe they could ditch that second car. Maybe they still need that one car because they've got this, that, and the other going on, but they can ditch the second one. If you're in that location and you don't have a car, good luck getting to Walmart or Aldi. The bus only goes once an hour, and I love our bus system, but this is not the best spot if you need a bus. The e-bike alternative would open up opportunities. So, what I'm proposing is, since our very esteemed planning staff is working on the comprehensive plan, what if we could do a pilot with a developer? So, I'm in conversation about that. What if we could do a pilot project with a developer and demonstrate that this can happen and we can get butts on bikes instead of in cars? We address affordability and we address climate action. So, I'm very excited about continuing this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Mary Grabbin, and I'm from Iowa City. I'm here to get some emergency funding for Iowa City Public Library. The Iowa City Public Library requires a full-time maintenance person to avoid the plague in the coming year. The site of the plague will be the patron elevator. The elevator's walls have been spat upon, and the remains have been left for months. The carpet in the elevator itself is filthy, and no air seems to circulate inside the elevator. The wall should be wiped down with disinfectant at least once a day, and the carpet should be replaced or shampooed, then vacuumed at least once a day, since the Iowa City Public Library opens and services the public, both housed and unhoused, seven days a week. Even the metal footing at the entrance is caked with dirt and filth. Since Iowa City Public Library only has an acting director, this is a problem for the city council. And I want to know what council person represents the downtown area, because it's a disgrace. You go in there, it's not right. And about the bus shelters, my usual pony. The bus shelters in Iowa City do not have to be high-tech, they just have to be installed. Although I and others are grateful for the wooden benches, they are looking rather tacky and need painting. They are not suitable for the coming winter season. The old shelters are in storage. Take them out and install or reinstall them and put the wooden benches in storage. And my personal problem is heat. When does the heating season begin? I'm in my apartment, and I'm freezing, and Keystone won't investigate my complaint. My main complaint is my thermostat. And yet, the plumber, who was supposed to know everything, more than me, and I've been there 30 years, he tells a bold-faced lie to Keystone that he has replaced my thermostat three times. He hasn't done anything. And I want some heat. Keystone called me today, she said the lady was good enough to call me back. She said the heat's on. Okay, I talked to her, by the time I finished talking to her, the heat was off. And she tells me how it's supposed to be, you know, it runs and so it can keep the temperature. No. And when the plumber, the so-called plumber, comes, he measures the heat in my wall, and I explained to her, I don't live in the wall, I live in the center of the apartment. So, I'm always having problems with Keystone, but they're always collecting their rent. And do something about the library. The library is the pride of Iowa City, and it is filthy. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone that shared during this time. We're going to move on to item number 10, planning and zoning matters. 10A is zoning code amendment. Flood plane management standards. Ordinance amending Title 14 zoning related to the city's flood plane management standards to ensure the community's continued participation and eligibility in the National Flood Insurance Program. This is the second consideration, and the staff is requesting expedited action.
A move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two meetings prior to the meeting, and which is to be finally passed, be suspended, and that the second consideration vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Mo.
Second.
Sala.
All right. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved Mo.
Second. Alter.
Roll call, please.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. All right, we are on to item number, our regular formal agenda. This is 11A. Ordinance adopting and incorporating SUDAS Design Manual and Specifications. Ordinance amending Title 15, 16, and 18 of the city code to adopt and incorporate the SUDAS Design Manual and Specifications, general supplemental design standards and specifications, and City of Iowa City Design Supplement and Specifications. Could I, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Jason Havel, city engineer, here to talk to you tonight about the proposed adoption of the SUDAS Design Manual. So, starting off, what is SUDAS? So, SUDAS is short for the Statewide Urban Design and Specifications. It's a group at Iowa State University that works with municipalities to promote uniformity of urban design and construction across Iowa. It includes basically two main sections. It includes items on the design side of things and then items on the specification side of things. So, the design side obviously makes sense, and then the specifications is really on the construction side of things. So, we're kind of talking about the design side of things tonight. So, what they create here at SUDAS is they create essentially the standard manual. So, this is kind of the framework that municipalities use for creating their design manuals and their specifications. And then cities adopt what they call the supplemental design manual or specifications. We actually here at Iowa City adopted the construction specifications back in May of 2018, and then you often see us here annually, usually July, or sorry, January or February, we come to you with updates that are necessary every year to just kind of keep those up to date. So, now we're talking about the design manual, and so that piece of it, we are proposing to adopt here. We've started this process tonight, continuing into November, and with that adoption, then we would also come back annually to update that as well, again, probably in that January, February timeframe. So, why would we update our design manual? Currently, our design manual dates back to 1996 is when it was last adopted. Portions of that actually were carried forward from past versions, so some of that is even older than that. To be honest, it's held up really well for its age. But one of the big benefits is consistency. You know, obviously, our consultants don't only work in Iowa City, our contractors don't only build in Iowa City. And so, having that consistency across municipalities, especially in our area, there's a lot of benefits. That helps them be more productive, more efficient, hopefully saves costs in the long run. Also includes ongoing updates and reviews. So, what this benefits is, it's not only us looking at it every year, it's also other municipalities, other communities, that if they have issues, we don't have to go through those same growing pains. We can learn from that all at the same time. And there's somebody else helping to look at that. How do we make these better? How do we keep these updated? And doing that as a group makes it much more efficient. And then finally, part of the item is a number of ordinance revisions. You know, it's a pretty lengthy document looking at those revisions. Over time, things have been pieced together, you know, in different areas of the code and that kind of thing. And so, part of what we're trying to do here is really make this a one-stop shop where people can go, if they have questions about design, there's one place they need to go, and it's all kind of right there together. So, what are the changes? So, to be honest, the majority of public improvements and work in the right of way will be exactly the same. So, most of the day-to-day stuff will be exactly the same. There's really two main differences that will come out of this. The first one is the requirement for drainable subbase and subdrain under pavements. Basically, what that does is gets the water out from underneath the pavement, and it's a pretty well documented, well-accepted fact that basically getting that water out extends the life of pavements, makes them last much longer, which again lowers the overall lifespan cost of our infrastructure. The second one is stormwater requirements. This is probably going to be the biggest change that would come out of the design manual update. It's going to include new formulas and new ways of kind of handling our detention basin designs. It's going to include a water quality component that would be new for our community but is included with SUDAS. It's also going to include additional options for stormwater management. So, it's going to give developers and city staff additional opportunities and options for how we handle stormwater management that can better reflect specific sites. And then it's also going to have standard drainage reports. So, all of our drainage reports that we get from consultants are going to look exactly the same. So, it's going to be a lot easier to compare apples to apples when we're looking at those reports. I just wanted to kind of point out a couple of examples, you know, kind of more of the typical that we might see here in Iowa City and what we see in other communities. You know, on the residential side of things, often we see a number of lots with, you know, one detention basin or maybe a couple detention basins to kind of handle stormwater management for that facility. This would allow maybe for some other things. So, it could be an example that often occurs is to reduce the size of that detention basin, which gets you more lots, more buildable area, whatever that might be, to help with that. And then maybe like a storm or a soil quality restoration to help address some of that water quality and runoff and those factors. On the commercial side of things, an example that we often see is to take, again, reduce that overall detention basin size, that requirement for space on the site, give some of that space back for development, but then they may be able to include, you know, rain gardens, bio swales, or pervious pavers, other options to address their stormwater management requirements. But again, gives them that flexibility to have different methods for dealing with that. As far as public outreach, so with this process, we've gone through, we've met a couple of times, or met once with the, and we really focus on developers and consultant engineers. As for city projects, as the owner, we have a lot of control over what we do with our consultants and those discussions that we have. So, I think on the public infrastructure projects that we do, we've already had a lot of that outreach, and we get to direct that pretty easily. Really, the development side of things is where I think the biggest change is going to come from. We wanted to reach out to them, make sure they understood that. I think overall, the response was positive. I think they see that conversion to SUDAS, again, that consistency helping in the long run. Some of the comments that we did receive, we're allowing for exemptions for those sites where you have a small increase in impervious area. Those are often a challenge because you're having to do something to address stormwater management, but they're often hard to design, but also hard to maintain. You know, you're usually talking about small pipes, small openings, that kind of thing that clog easily, so it gets to be a headache for not only the design side of things, but again, the maintenance and the ongoing lifespan of that. Second is those challenging sites where, you know, you can't do kind of the status quo. You can't do the cookie cutter option, and what do we do with that? And there's often times where in those situations, you're having to say, then there's not really a path forward, or, you know... You can't do the cookie cutter option, and what do we do with that? And there's often times where, in those situations, you're having to say, then there's not really a path forward, or, you know, this kind of kills the project because there's not a way to deal with that. This just gives us more flexibility to say, you know what? If we feel like you're, you know, we're requiring you to make an honest effort, you're doing what you can do with the site, there is the option to scale that back and say, okay, let's get the best solution we can to actually get something to happen on this site. And then also that consistency with other communities in our area. That was one of the big things we heard is, you know, Iowa City's different, you know, your formulas are different, whatever it might be, having that be more consistent is much more efficient for everyone. As far as next steps go, public hearing tonight, so first step in that process, and then we would look at kind of the additional readings and adoption here in November. And then, like I said, in the future, you will see us again annually as we update those, that SUDAS manual as needed. So with that, I am happy to take any questions.
Yeah, just real quick, kind of looking at this big picture with these changes, especially with the stormwater, would this represent an improvement? Would it be basically better, worse, or kind of neutral from the current standards in terms of when we face like big rain events? Because I know one of the things is we don't want, you know, our streams and river and everything to get a huge shock of water.
Yeah, I think it would be better. I think, you know, obviously, as time goes on, you know, we become more familiar with flood events and how we handle those, and I think the built environment and all of that. So I think this is definitely an advancement in that area. You know, obviously, it's not going to be flood-proof or, you know, there's no such thing, but certainly it's an advancement in how we deal with stormwater.
Okay. So like in terms of like the outflow, it wouldn't, you know, even though the flexibility would not have a net result of increasing like a shock of water too?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Regarding the new process whereby I imagine in older neighborhoods, it's incredibly difficult to meet standards, and you need to look for exceptions, does the process point those developers or the city to make alternate accommodations somewhere else, maybe somewhere in the neighborhood or the region? Or is it just that you don't need to comply? So if you can't comply, you just get allowed to not comply? Or do you have to do something alternate somewhere else?
So the way that it would be set up now is that you, it would not have a situation where you would be including other properties in your compliance. So but basically, what it would be is we would require you to make a best effort to do it on your site, do what you can on your site to address compliance.
Does this address? I've been thinking about, over a period of several years, there have been some complaints from people who belong to HOAs, and they have those ponds that are for runoff. And does this perhaps help? I guess two things are running through my mind. One is, is what's being presented here as what we can do moving forward? Is that something that can be possibly a solution for almost like retrofitting if there's a pretty exacerbated problem among those? And also, as Josh was talking about, these are for individual properties, and remedies are not, based on age and what have you. Do the very same things that you just presented to us, do those apply to those larger kind of built ponds and whatnot for runoff in those neighborhoods?
So I would say that this really wouldn't apply to that situation specifically. I can say that we are, as part of a separate process, trying to work through that and figure out ways to, you know, kind of twofold. How do we deal with the ones that are our problems? And how do we work with residents to fix those? But also, as we move forward, how do we do a better job of educating people of what they are, how they are maintained, so that it's not something where it gets to a point that it becomes a lot harder to deal with?
Thank you.
Yeah. Does adding granular base add a lot of cost? I mean, it's going to make the roads last longer, but is it going to increase costs?
It does add cost. I would not say it's significant. And to be honest, as we've discussed it with developers, that's not been a point of contention that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And most other communities are already doing it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give a first consideration, please?
So moved Mo.
Second. Sala.
Council discussion.
Thanks to the staff for taking some extra time. This was one I was very interested in, so they educated me as best they could on a really complicated topic. So every year we get in our budget discussions that graph of how our costs of roads keep going up and up and up and up and up. And so I think we should be paying even more and more attention on how these things are built, because that's scary for us and the public.
Definitely.
Roll call, please.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Wyline.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. 11B, Animal Care and Adoption Center Training Additional Project. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Animal Care and Adoption Center Training Addition Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I will welcome Michelle. All right. And Devin. Great. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for seeing us tonight. I'm Devon Streif. I'm the Animal Services Coordinator. This is Michelle Riedinger with the City Engineering Department. We'll just go over a few slides here. So just a little bit of background about why it is that we're asking for this addition. Currently, we have two rooms that are utilized. One is our staff break room, and one is a very small meet and greet room is what we would call it. These rooms are utilized for dogs during cold, extreme cold and extreme heat to socialize, to interact with potential adopters. And that often means that we cannot use that space for other things. So I can't use that adoption meet and greet room to bring adopters in because I might have dogs socializing in there. Likewise, our staff break room also has three offices in it. So that means if I have volunteers bringing dogs up to do training work with them when it's hot or cold, that interrupts the daily operations of the staff members working in there. For large-scale impounds, we see a few of them a year, approximately eight or plus is what we call large scale. It just helps provide a space, as you can see here. This was our off-site housing facility in August of 2023, when we impounded 131 dogs assisting Johnson County. We set up these temporary crates here, pens as you would have them, which is not something we could do currently. But with the addition, we would be able to set this up in the event that something like that would happen again, whether it be cats, whether it be dogs. Currently, we can house 26 animals, 26 dogs, around 130 cats. We're constantly teetering on the edge of being over capacity. And when that happens, we have to set up temporary crates in the hallways or in vestibles that aren't meant for animals to be housed in. It creates a safety risk for staff and the animals, and can be very unsanitary, difficult to disinfect and keep clean. So providing that space where we can keep all that contained helps mitigate the risk of dogs escaping, cats escaping, communicable diseases being transported, everything like that between the two. More or less, this is a multipurpose room. We would be using it for dog enrichment and training, animal overflow in housing, quarantine space, emergency housing, emergency housing support. We have seen a large influx in emergency housing requests. As we all know, crisis does not have a timeline, and our emergency housing program runs for 10 days. If I have my 12 stray kennels full, and somebody needs emergency housing for their two dogs because they've become unhoused, and they're not moving in for another five days, now their choice is to live in their car on the street with their pets. And if we have the space, we can offer that emergency housing to them. But if I'm full with animals already, I can't offer that to them. This space would provide us the opportunity to utilize for dogs already in our care, that we can set up house for a couple of days, so we can bring animals like that into the facility as needed. Likewise, small events and gatherings. We've had some Girl Scout troops. Just today, we had Midwest One Bank down doing a whole lot of community service projects. The Girl Scout troops like to come in and make dog toys and things like that for the dogs. Little stuffed treats for the critters. We have a spring open house. We had our first annual last spring, so that would be fun to be able to utilize that space for more indoor activities if we needed to. Likewise, if FACF had small fundraisers and events that they would like to participate in, that building would be for them as well. As well as, you know, another space for city, if city needs a break and you need to come down and have animal enrichment meetings, things like that, you can certainly utilize it. The space will have utility sink and counter area, so that any work that we are doing in that room, the bowls, litter pans, anything like that can be washed immediately in that room, and we don't have to take it into general population to spread disease or anything like that. And we'll also have an overhead door, something that we don't have right now. This will provide a safety net for our animal services officers and other entities that bring animals in inside their vehicles, to allow them to come into a space, close the door securely behind them before they remove animals from the vehicle. This helps prevent animals from escaping out into the community, and it also helps as for safety barrier for them.
I'll just highlight a couple of things kind of from the plan set. So here's what the building is going to kind of look like from the outside. It's very much going to match the existing kind of exterior appearance. So that metal panel, shingle roof. As Devin said, we have that garage door on the south part of the building. We'll have doors into both of the yards, kind of on either side. And then just stepping through the floor plan, so you can see north is right on this plan. So on the left, there's that garage door with the trench drain. So again, allowing us to bring those vehicles into that space. On the right side, you can see that counter and that utility sink that Devin had pointed out. That blue bar is kind of a section through, so if you're standing in that space and you're kind of looking in front of you what the space is going to look like. Two things to kind of highlight on this, that purple outline, there is currently an existing outside air intake for the mechanical unit that serves the building, and that currently is on that south face of the building where we're adding the addition. So we need to extend that out to keep that HVAC system, that existing HVAC system, working. And then the other thing to point out on this section is that orange bar, we're going to have a mechanical mezzanine. The space is going to be, the HVAC is separate from the rest of the building, just because it was coming as an addition, and the existing mechanical system is kind of maxed out. So this is going to have a furnace and a condensing unit, so pretty similar to what a residential may be. And again, this is just kind of a separate HVAC system. One other note on the HVAC, and one thing that's kind of contributing some of the cost is with that vehicle in there, there's some code implications of fire rating, and we also need a gas detection system, so making sure that staff that are using this space have plenty of safeguards to make sure that nothing happens. One other thing to highlight kind of with the project, and another thing that's contributing to some of the cost and some of the impact to the facility is we're having to relocate and do some utility work, so moving the water main or the water service into this building and work around the existing electrical. So that kind of spins into impacts to the facility. The facility will largely be open to the public. Staff will still be able to use this facility, so, you know, pretty much business as usual. There will be a couple days where we'll have to close down as we do water tie-ins, electrical tie-ins. And then the south access will be impacted, but we've been working with the animal shelter to make sure that we have all the access they need and all that stuff. Just highlighting how this kind of matches in with the strategic plan, improving kind of the safety and well-being, innovative, you know, implemented, and then expanding innovative public safety models and facilities to improve outcomes and relationships within the community, partnering with nonprofits to address the most emergent and foundational community safety and well-being needs, building community by fostering social connections and developing safe, accessible public spaces for gathering, you know, continuing and expanding our facilities as needed. And we are employing and hitting some values of climate action and partnership and engagement by working closely with FACF and using LED light fixtures and some other kind of climate action focused in the new building.
Okay, you've heard us say FACF a couple of times. That stands for Friends of the Animal Center Foundation. We have two of the lovely representatives with us tonight. They will be funding the entire project. They're a nonprofit organization that has been working closely with FACF or Iowa City Animal Center since 1999. They are in charge of all of our fundraising and events, so anything that is not within the city budget, they help us pay for to get more animals adopted, to help support the community further than what we can do sometimes within our limitations. Currently, they pledge $90,000 annually to the animal shelter and the animals, and $92,000 to our volunteer program's assistant position, full-time staff member. We've had a strong working relationship with them, and they are very excited to get this project going.
I want to make sure I heard that correctly.
[laughing].
Who's paying for that?
Friends of the Animal Center Foundation.
Wow.
Yes.
After, I just seeking clarification.
Yes, yep, you heard it.
Have to save comments for our deliberations.
Yep, so you kind of alluded to the estimated construction cost is 940,000. The overall total project cost or the number that's been some of the FACF fundraising is 1.3 million, and that is the estimated construction cost plus the design fee, and some of the furniture fixtures and equipment fit out in the final space, so kennels, some of the furniture that isn't necessarily bolted down into that space schedule. So we're looking at bid opening November 19th, we'll award at the council meeting in December, and then we're looking at spring construction, and that should be about a year. So hoping to have that facility open in spring of 2027. Now, will take any questions?
Looks like the building was set up for future additions. Like when it was constructed, it was conceived that it could be added on. Is this new addition allow for additional future additions?
I believe it did.
I believe so. When we were picking this particular location for the addition, we shuffled through three different options of what had been suggested in the preliminary designs of the building for options to add on. This was the one based on our needs, yeah, that, based on our needs for, based on our needs, just the general space of being multipurpose as opposed to putting it in the front where we have more offices and more traffic of the public. So we could, I guess, I don't know the boundary back there, but.
Okay. No, I'm like our mayor, just thrilled that we have a wonderful not-for-profit that did fundraising for this and excited and want this to happen, but also expect you guys to keep growing, so.
We'll save comments for council deliberations.
Just raise your voice at the end. Then it's a question.
I was wondering if this has any kind of long-term, I know something like your capacity is not like a rigid number, obviously, because in 2023, when the puppy mill was busted, you got 130 dogs. But that's like an emergency situation. I was wondering if this addition would allow for more consistent, larger capacity for the animal shelter as a whole, would you think, or?
I could see that, yes. I believe if I'm understanding the question correctly, yes, it would provide more opportunity for that as needed. We, Johnson County, were contracted with Johnson County to provide their services, so that was a county situation that we had to take in for that within Iowa City. I would say our biggest intakes in Iowa City tend to be around eight to 10. We have typically, once a year, I would say, anything more than 10-plus that we have to figure out how to facilitate.
10 animals?
10 animals plus.
Okay.
And from one location or one person.
Okay. I understand that. I thought you were saying you only have 10 animals in the animal shelters.
Oh, goodness, no.
I was going to say, that'd be cool, but.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah.
All right. Here are no other questions. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give approval, please?
So moved Mo.
Second.
Harmsen.
All right, council discussion.
Yeah, this is great. And thank you to the Friends of the Animal Center Foundation for their funding.
I also know there's a volunteer that I know who is so excited about this. She works with the dogs regularly, and so the notion that there can be... She works with the dogs regularly and so the notion that there can be expanded indoor space for those extreme weather or just regular seasons so that the dogs can move around and can work with the volunteers and not have to navigate it, she is over the moon about this. So I just want to say that it's like, it's not just like that we're all excited. It's like hearing it more from the people who like within, it's extraordinary and.
Got to be careful though, having a kid volunteer there, you end up with an extra cat.
Sean, you know my household.
Yeah, it's, I just want to say about a year ago, I found, I bought a bouquet of flowers from Hy-Vee and they were sourced, I swear, this is germane, it was sourced in South America and I got it and there was a lizard in there that came all the way from South America. It was in the winter and thanks for letting me drop off the lizard. I didn't know what else to do. Yeah. This was a while ago, but I just want to say thank you for that. I had no idea what to do with the lizard.
All right, with that, we will say roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. 11C sale of western half of Outlet C Industrial Campus. Resolution authorizing conveyance of western approximate one-half of Outlet C in Iowa City Industrial Campus. I'm going to open the public hearing and we'll bring up Rachel. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Kilburg Varley, Economic Development Coordinator. So as you are aware, we have an industrial park along 420th Street and at the start of this year, we had 40 acres available. And as you may recall, at your meeting back in August, you approved a purchase agreement for 20 of those acres with PJP Holdings. So this agenda item would approve the sale of those remaining 20 acres to Mid-American Energy. The sale would allow Mid-American to relocate their operations that are currently at 1630 Lower Muscatine Road to this industrial park land. We've agreed to a purchase price of $1.15 per square foot, so at that 20 acres, that's just over $1 million. The sale would be contingent upon them closing on the sale of their Lower Muscatine property, which they intend to sell to Procter &amp; Gamble's Oral B site next door. And then it would also be contingent on the final plat and city council's approval of that subdivision. So our study staff are currently working with all the parties to move those pieces forward with the goal of closing by the end of the year as stated in that purchase agreement. And then after and assuming that we close on both of these land sales with PJP and with Mid-American, that'll be the last of the property that we have available in the industrial park. So that campus was kind of created at a time when the city felt the need to acquire and improve the land in order to attract industrial uses and expand that sector in our community. We feel like that's been a success and so we don't anticipate that. We'll be trying to assemble land and market for industrial use at this time. Any questions?
You did mention there was a number of contingencies and you said staff is working to move them all forward. Do you see any potential bumps or does it mean?
When you have a couple of parties involved of just trying to, you know, draw the right lines, it just is a matter of coordination.
Relating to one of those contingencies, Rachel, you said subdivision would come back to us. Is that of this Mid-Am site or of the Oral B site?
Of the industrial park land. So PJP and Mid-American and the city need to figure out what that plot looks like.
Got it, okay. And is that, that's for the, because it's just the half of it?
That's right. It's the full 40 acres is the outlaw right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, here are no more questions. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Yes, welcome.
My name is Melanie Bimson. I'm the Economic Development Program Manager for Greater Iowa City. We're proud to express our strong support for Mid-American Energy's purchase of the final acres of the Iowa City Industrial Park. Mid-American has long been a trusted partner empowering progress across Johnson County. Their commitment to reliable, affordable and sustainable energy directly supports our region's business growth, infrastructure development and quality of life. By acquiring this final parcel, Mid-American will strengthen its ability to serve current and future employers while making space for other companies to expand and ensuring that Iowa City remains a hub for innovation and investment. As one of Iowa's largest investors in renewable energy and energy efficiency, Mid-American continues to demonstrate how utility can be both environmentally responsible and economically catalytic. Their project spanning wind, power and natural gas has helped businesses grow, supported grid reliability and kept rates among the lowest in the nation. Their customer-first approach and community stewardship make Mid-American more than a service provider. They're a partner in shaping the future of our economy. Their investment reinforces our shared commitment to building a region that is efficient, resilient and ready for the next generation of employers. We value Mid-American's continued presence as a neighbor, an employer and economic partner and we look forward to working alongside them as they continue to power the growth of Iowa City and the greater Johnson County region. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? See no one in person or online? I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give approval, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Burgess.
Go ahead. All right, second by, moved by Mo, second by Burgess, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes, motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 11D, historic preservation restriction on Sankse Gilmore House. Resolution approving the agreement for the restrictive covenant with the Board of Regents for 109 East Market Street, commonly known as Sankse Gilmore House. All right, can I get a motion to give approval, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Sala.
All right, and we'll turn it over to our city manager, Jeff Rowan.
May I thank you, Mayor. So as the council knows, our city code has protections for local historic landmarks and historic districts as well. However, in most cases, those protections in our city code do not extend to state or federal properties. And so we're talking about two properties here with this item that are owned by the state, specifically the Board of Regents. That is the Cannon Gay House on Melrose Avenue and the Sankse Gilmore House on Market Street. So in, I'm going to go back in history a little bit and then bring us back to today. In 2003, the university voluntarily agreed to subject the Cannon Gay House on Melrose to our local historic preservation code, so it would be subject like any other local property. Since that time, the Sankse, I'm sorry, the Cannon Gay House has had some structural issues. It's noted in the item and in the university's letter, have some significant foundation issues and that building has not been utilized for several years. The university does not feel comfortable having anybody in that structure and the cost to remedy those issues were noted in the letter as being fiscally irresponsible. So the university approached us with this dilemma, knowing that one of our, probably the biggest historic preservation goal that we have had for the last decade is to protect a different property, the Sankse Gilmore House, which is located on Market Street. And they are correct indeed that for many years, the city and the preservation community has sought to protect the Sankse Gilmore House, which is thought to be the oldest house in Iowa City with construction dating back to 1843. The Sankse Gilmore House in 2018 was listed on Preservation Iowa's Most Endangered Structures list, so it's not only a priority for local community, but the statewide community. And the solution here in front of you is that the university would essentially transfer those local protections that are on the Cannon Gay House, again, that Melrose House, over to the Sankse Gilmore House. That would mean that the Cannon Gay House is no longer subject to our local historic preservation code. However, the Sankse Gilmore House on Market Street, which is not subject now, would be subject to that code going forward. And that's all done through a restricted covenant process. So hopefully I covered that okay and didn't get those two homes mixed up. I'm happy to try to answer questions if you have any.
I was curious how those, were those properties always university properties or are we like 100 years?
No, they were both, both private properties that over time the university acquired.
Okay.
All right, here are no other questions. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? See no one in person or online? Council discussion.
Just point everybody to the late handout that came from Friends of Historic Preservation. I know that I, this is a community that I know pretty well and they all are always sad to see trade-offs, but this, in this particular situation, it seems like a pretty good deal to save the Sankse Gilmore House. So while no one could show up to speak for it, they did write a letter in support of this trade. And I'm really excited for an opportunity to save this Sankse Gilmore House. I think it's really important and I don't know that many people know about the other house and it might be in the crosshairs of a road project anyway someday, so this one seems like a really good choice. So I'll be voting for it.
Same.
I was just curious, sorry, I know this is comment time, not question time, but just trying to avoid getting in the position again where the university gets its hands on a property or a state entity gets its hand on a property that we have or the community has interest in preserving. I guess I just don't know what types of, and this could just be a question that I could ask Friends of Historic Preservation, but a lot of these places, like you said, are privately owned and then get sold. I was wondering if there's any type of outreach the city might do or a nonprofit might do to avoid being in this position in the future to where if someone's looking to sell a property, they could be approached with another option instead of selling it to someone who our standards don't apply? Yeah.
Yeah, that's a.
Yes, it would be great.
Describes a lot of issues over the years and it's not really, you know, just when the university may acquire a property. That's probably a minority type of scenario. It's mostly when a property with historic characteristics, the owner that's cared for that property but may not, has perhaps not pursued designation decides to sell it. Most recently, the council may remember the Pauli Eyes Pizza Building on the north side was kind of under the same scenario that you just described, Councilor Y-line. So the Historic Preservation Commission and staff do their best to identify those and over time, we have done some proactive outreach and engagement. We've had some successes frankly in convincing property owners to move towards landmark designations. But that's always, it's always a very difficult thing and there's always usually some economic concerns that you have to work through that can be pretty steep on the owner's side. Sometimes the owner or the buyer, depending on the scenario, will feel like it's a process that may devalue their profit-making ability.
I support efforts for preservation, so when it's possible, I will always support it.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think if many of these organizations have the money, they would buy up all the historic resources and protect them, but that's just, you know, not enough money to do that. But yeah, once, if a private organization does acquire a historic asset, they can voluntarily list and they can make a covenant on it too if they want to. So the city would happily support that if somebody wanted to do that.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Mo.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes seven to zero. 11E Sister Cities Program. Resolution establishing a sister city program framework for the city of Iowa City. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Y-line.
Second, Sala.
All right, so this has been a long time coming for this opportunity and I'm going to hand it over to Mayor Pro Tem.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to give you a summary about the resolutions. And if you remember back on April 2024, the city council dedicated the mayor and myself to explore establishing of the sister city program for Iowa City. Over the past several months, we have held a series of meeting and conversation together, community input and share what that programs could look like. And this including like the work session that we have with the council on September 17, a discussion with community stakeholders on October 1st and also a public feedback session on December 2nd where we had team stakeholder came back and give us some feedback. Based on that input, we are bringing forward resolution that outline how the city, sister city programs would be structured and managed. The resolution proposed that a new independent nonprofit organization be created to oversee the program. This nonprofit will review requested from new sister cities partnership coordinators, cultures and educational seeking and make recommendation to the city council. While the city will not provide direct financial or staff support, the council will continue to consider, like, I mean, like, out of, not this specific, they can still apply for grant, they can still do that. So not like we are not going to give them anything. So the council will continue to consider sister city partnership recommended by the nonprofit as long as they meet criteria that ensure accountability and alignment with our community value. So some of those criteria included manual benefit through cultural, education, economic and humanitarian exchange, strong community engagement and support for sustain the relationship, abundance of geographic and cultural diversity among partners, long-term viability through volunteer leadership and community partnership, and alignment with Iowa City commitment to human rights, climate action and global collaborations. And to maintain accountability, at least one current city council member will serve as a voting member on the nonprofit organization board. And the organization must either have or be sponsored by a qualified 501(c)(3), you know, and they don't have to be their own 501(c)(3). I think the discussion was said they can join James King or any other organization that can be physical sponsor. Finally, any new sister city partnership will require a majority voting of the city council before the mayor is authorized to sign an agreement. And the city council will also have the authority to end any partnership by majority vote if needed. So this approach allow interested residents and organization to drive the program through volunteer energy and community leadership while maintaining oversight and alignment with the city priority. And we can answer, the mayor and I can answer any question, so. And we have also Tony's here, so he can, if you can give a comment, yeah.
When we open our public.
When we open the public comment, yeah, of course.
Any questions at this time by council?
I was just going to ask how you, can you walk us through the partnership process? How you pick a partner and a partner picks you and what the council and their action would be for that step?
That should be Tony, really. But they, the nonprofit, they will evaluate that, so. And after that, they send the recommendation to us.
Okay.
Yeah, and am I saying it right, Tony? Yeah. Because it will be really their own nonprofit.
Okay.
And a nonprofit organization, they will set their pilots and rules and when Tony say, he's going to talk more about that.
I know that the nonprofit hasn't even been created yet, so probably not, but I do know that a particular city visited here with the prospect of potentially being a sister city. Is that true?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, you remember the, yeah, city from China, they came and they expressed that, but we.
You remember the, yeah, city from China, they came and they exposed that, but at that time, we were not a Sister City, like, were not registered with the international.
I thought it was Boating, China?
What the name of the?
Boating.
Boating?
Yeah.
It's like 5 million people live there.
Yes.
Basically Iowa City.
Yeah.
But I don't know. I'm ecstatic about it.
If no more questions, then we will open up public comment at this time, and you'll be allowed up to three minutes. Please state your name and city you're from.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Management. My name is Tony Joseph. I'm from Iowa City. I grew up in Muscatine, Iowa. I moved there about eight years ago. I'm passionate about citizen diplomacy and helping our city continue to be a beacon of international growth. We have plenty of organizations in Iowa City that has international component, but Sister City is a people-to-people, friends development. It's, it's not formal, like a Chamber of Commerce or anything like that. It develops. If you travel and you make friends in a city in Munich, let's say you're in Germany, and you want to have Sister City with them, you can develop that relationship, or with China, with Baodeng, so any place like that. So I'm ecstatic that the city council has agreed to visit this topic. My wish tonight is that you, for an affirmative way, to start the entity, the not-for-profit, which wouldn't cost the city anything, there's mechanisms already in your city, my city, that allows us to form the organization and take baby steps forward until we can establish a funding source and volunteers create the board. And then the idea is to create the board, gather up cities that we would like to form Sister Cities with, present it to the city council. You all make some decisions. We come back to us as yes, no, yes, no. Ideally, initially, we're not going to start with 10 cities, one or two that people are passionate about, that we can have folks who are in the city willing to put their time and effort in, and their money, to, to host guests when they come in. The mayor's role would be to meet them, greet them, the face of the city, right? And so that, that would be the primary role for the mayor and city council, but the, the work is done by the volunteer committee and who are passionate about developing more people-to-people relationships throughout the world, not, you know, just in one country, but as many places as we can. We have, we have a broad, diverse community of folks from all over the world. You know, it'd be nice to have one from every continent to start with and then go from there, but you know, I am living proof of someone who was born in a different country and grew up in Iowa, and I want to see more and more people interact globally. So that's, I guess I have 40 seconds left. I'm not going to keep talking unless, I'll take questions. I don't know if I'm allowed to answer questions. Okay, that's it. Thank you all for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? I can just tell him to go sit down and he'll understand. No. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mary Gravitt, and I'm from Iowa City. I can't imagine any city wanting to have anything to do with the United States while Trump is in office. I'm sorry, I hate that man. And I seen what he has done to bring us down to we don't even recognize ourselves. So I, I wouldn't want to trust anybody who want anything to do with being a relationship with the United States. I love Iowa City, but Iowa City is the only blue city in a red state. Maybe we could do something, you know, by, you know, being friends, but I don't know who would want to be bothered with us. We, we're in a rotten situation that I have never seen in my life, and we have a man who is president. It's like a joke. We're living in a science fiction. The closest thing I can think of, we're living in Doctor Who, the Tom Baker episodes. So who? I mean, I wouldn't trust them. They want to have something to do with this situation? We try, and we want to do good. The majority of Americans want to good. That's why we had no King Day. That's why we had all the people in Iowa City participating and carrying signs. And, and people in Iowa, where some of these little towns, where Trump got 30% of the vote, but the people came out and marched. Maybe some people remember the Americanism that's in their soul that we're all born with over here, and we hear, and, and some of it's propaganda, you know? But I, I can't see the idea that's anybody in their right mind would want to have anything to do with being related to the United States as long as the orange man was there. So we have to consider other things, but I mean, it's a good idea, but I, it's not my idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address this topic? See no one in person or online? Counsel discussion. I did just want to jump out and say, it's been a joy to work alongside Mayor Protem on this and to work with community members on this. Mr. Tony Joseph, really appreciate your passion for this type of really people-to-people partnership. And that's what this is about, is not really governmental relations overall. The one thing that we wanted to ensure with this proposal is that whatever the entity is, is that they would definitely have some of the things that this council really value, a part of their decision and recommendations. The reality of any Sister City is that the mayor, the mayors of those cities have to sign. And so you'll see the resolution was written in a way where the mayor can't sign until the council majority vote has taken place. And so I think that's how we have our checks and balances for this council. So thanks to Mayor Protem, who really kind of did a lot to really gear us towards this opportunity that we're, that we have before us tonight, and that has really allowed it to be a community-led, volunteer-led effort, and for this council to definitely still have those protections in place that will give some accountability. So just wanted to say thanks to everybody, and I'm happy that this is before us tonight, and I will be supporting this opportunity for us.
Sure. Thank you for the work that you guys have done on this. This, this would be a cool program. Community comment reminded me of a line from Groucho Marx, "I never want to belong to any club that will have me." But that aside, I think that actually speaks to why a program like this is different and can be good, because certainly our leaders might not be what we wish, but the people are still good, as, as Mary pointed out, and want to do good. And so that person-to-person, more personal connection is, you know, that's the kind of diplomacy we can still do and be proud of. So thank you for this.
Yeah. I'll also say, I totally agree with the sentiment that I, when I just recently went to Japan and Korea, and I was kind of worried, you know, like for this American band playing and just American people, if they were going to be like, you have to answer for this, or what, what are y'all doing? I think I was very heartened to, the entirety of the reception we got was one of, are you okay? And we, and we see that, we know that we're just people, and, you know, when we were in South Korea, they recently just had a coup attempt, you know, and they have crazy stuff going on in their country too. So it's a, I, I think generally people in other areas are just not what their leaders are, and we're all just working people, and we have more in common with each other than our leaders. So that's why I adore this idea, and I can't wait to see what comes of it.
I just remember when we first, when this was brought to council, and, you know, we're kind of trying to problem solve in the moment, or surface at least, all the questions. What is this going to look like, and how is this? And it was a lot. There were a lot of questions about how are we going to make this work? We can't be the ones to make it work, et cetera. So I am just incredibly impressed with the amount of work that has been done to unknit all of the, the issues and to create a clear path where there is collaboration and there is support from the city, but it is not city-driven, which really speaks exactly to not just the spirit, but the letter of what a Sister City is, which is that it is people-to-people. So just thank you, Mayor Protem, Mayor Tony, and everyone else, if there are others involved in sort of working through all of the, these logistics, because there were a lot of them, and they were very complex, about how do we make this work? And this is very impressive. And I think now, more than ever, is when we have to say, well, let's just do it ourselves, because man, relying on so-called leaders isn't the right thing to do. So thank you for the work you've done.
Thanks for figuring it out and bringing it back.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah. That's what she, what she said. I just said, I just, I just did it with a lot more words. I just did it with a lot more words.
Yeah. I also, if one thing did give me anxiety is like, how are we going to choose one city? But now that I know it's not just one city that we have to pick, I don't know, it makes me even more excited.
Yes. All right. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y. Line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. All right. We are on to item number 12, which is council appointments. 12A is Housing and Community Development Commission. There is one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30, 2027.
I would really recommend Germaine Ensley, I think.
Ensley?
Yes.
I'd like to also throw out Stacy Kaiser. She was the 14 and a half years with the Quad Cities Not-for-Profit, Housing Not-for-Profit. That one jumped out at me too.
She was in the Quad Cities. There's another one who's also from the Quad Cities. I know this indirectly through community bonds, what have you. Athena Bond. I think actually it's Ilers in the application. Also a Quad City person who did a lot with sort of grassroots organizing, so it's not reflected in the application. So I recognize that my extra bit there may not apply, but I just wanted to put that plug in.
I just feel like Germaine, he used to work also at the shelter house, and he know, like, a lot, like, when he come to homes and, you know, houses, you know, the needs, and he also like a transportation advocacy person, and.
I had Athena Bond and Stacy Kaiser as my top two.
So right now I have Athena Bond at two, Jeremy Ensley at one, and Stacy Kaiser at three. And that was just going off of you two, and now Councilor Burgess. Any other nominations of individuals? Quite the impressive group.
Again, always.
Yes. I, I mean, I think we have, all the ones that are submitted so far, I think they have great opportunities to really lend their voice and expertise to this commission. I'll throw my support behind Stacy Kaiser, which brings us to four. And so with that, can we have a motion to appoint Stacy Kaiser to the Housing and Community Development Commission?
So moved.
Moved by Sala.
Second, Harmsen.
Second by Harmsen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We're at item number 12B Airport Zoning Commission. One vacancy to fill a six-year term, January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2029. Counsel discussion.
How about Isaac Medina?
I know.
I would do that.
Second.
Yes, all right. Any other, well, there's no other nomination, so any other discussion on this? I just wanted to know if we have other, at least four is supporting?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, all right.
Yes.
Hannah Sue. So, all right. So could I get a motion to appoint Isaac Medina to the Airport Zoning Commission?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Mo.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number 13, which is Announcements of Vacancies New. Planning and Zoning Commission. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30, 2026, and applications must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, December 2, 2025. And you can go to our city's website to apply. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Burgess. Second, Alter.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 14, Announcements of Vacancies Previous. 14A, we have Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment. One vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Adjustment. One vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals. One vacancy to fill a licensed electrician for a five-year term. Climate Action Commission. Three vacancies to fill three-year terms. Human Rights Commission. Three vacancies to fill three-year terms. Parks and Recreation Commission. Three vacancies to fill four-year terms. Public Art Advisory Committee. One vacancy for an at-large representative to fill a three-year term. Public Art Advisory Committee. One vacancy for an art or design professional to fill three-year terms. Senior Center Commission. Two vacancies to fill three-year terms. Applications must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 28, 2025. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment. One vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals. One vacancy for an HVAC professional to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission. One vacancy for Brown Street representative to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission. One vacancy for Jefferson Street representative to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission. One vacancy for Woodland Avenue representative to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We are at item number 15, City Council Information.
I would just like to highlight that the, the voting for recertification of Iowa City's AFSCME is happening right now. So if you are a city employee, know that you should go vote yes to recertify.
Here are another, no other announcements. We're at item number 16, Report on Items from City Staff. City Manager's Office.
Not tonight, thanks.
City Attorney.
Me neither, thank you.
All right. And City Clerk. We're at item number 17. Could I get a motion to adjourn, which is about, what, seven?
28.
We'll say 7:28.
7:27.
7:27.
So moved. Let's not delay this.
Second.
By Mo, second by Burgess. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
We were trying to string that out until it was 7:30.
No.
All right.[1762.76]